Stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, deliberate, and just for all.
The rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure a public productive meeting. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment. But the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessarily business to govern the town. All questions and comments are to be directed to the chair. And the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for comment for any single person on any single subject. The rules of procedure are posted in the town hall and are variable for anyone to review.
Alright, so I think we got everybody that's on Zoom, so thank you. And everybody who's on Zoom, I have added your names to the attendance. If you do not have a name presented as your name on the Zoom call, just please make sure if you're going to speak, you have to identify yourself. Members in attendance, Bob Jones is not here yet, but perhaps he will be. We have Mike Beecher, Jessica Van Orte, Brian Crossman, Rich Hewitt, and I'm the Assistant, Kristen Powers. I think that's that for introductions. We have some additions. Under pre-requested, Bob Morleano is here to gather some signatures. And then we have Bob Morleano and Chris Pritchard, who are here to provide an update to the board on some research they've been conducting regarding municipal building construction. So that's under pre-requested. And we have two executive sessions this evening, two-part. One is to discuss ongoing attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body. And the other is to discuss labor relations agreements with employees. Did anybody, I think that was everything. I tried to calm through and see. There's a bunch of things that need to be discussed under the road foreman's or the highway report. But we can just talk about that when we get to it. So was there anything else?
We're good.
Okay. And then the minutes that need approval are from our last regular meeting, which was March 19th. There were a couple of things I had, there was a correction to the type of truck that we had put to auction. I think I had written an international Ozemac or vice versa. And I had some random numbers somehow got in there, so I corrected that. And then also the dates, I've been not able to get out of February and into March, and now here we are to April. So I had said all the organizational meeting minutes were in February, but I corrected those dates.
Okay.
So a couple of little typos, but other than that, that's it.
I'll move to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
Any more in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Carrie. Bob Morleano.
Which subject can I list?
Signatures first.
Okay, signatures first. So this is the annual update of the local emergency management plan. And it has to be updated every year to do May 1st. And there's signatures that I need from Mike to sign. One is the Public Works Mutual Aid Agreement. Second one is National Incident Management System Adoption Document. And the third one is the Local Emergency Management Plan Municipal Adoption Form. So we have to sign there twice. There once. There once. These documents are the same as they were the last three or four years.
Do we normally have a motion, probably makes it cleaner, to sign the emergency management plan?
Sure, I'll move that we sign the emergency management plan.
Second?
I'll second though.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Carrie.
Also, each of you have a copy of the latest Local Emergency Management Plan, so that's your copy. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much for taking care of that, man.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, under Emergency Management, or E-911 actually, letters went out to everyone on Rupert Mountain Road, I'm going to call it, Rupert Hill Road, sorry. The road here, the road here is Rupert Hill Road. People refer to it sometimes as Rupert Mountain Road. The issue became up, there was a carbon monoxide call. It went in as, it was a third-party alarm company. Evidently, the owner of the building, of the residence, told the alarm company that the address was Rupert Mountain Road. Unfortunately, in the E-911 system, it's Rupert Hill Road, and that's the official name, actually. So the dispatcher could not find the road. To make a long story short, I've written a letter to every residents on the road to let them know that the official name is Rupert Hill Road. And for E-911, for law enforcement, or EMS, or fire calls to E-911, they need to refer to it as Rupert Hill Road. So that letter went out the other day, so just so you're advised that that's what's done.
Anybody have any dis-question, questions on this emergency management plan? No, I guess. That's where I'll stop.
Thank you.
You can update us, you and Chris.
Yeah, so Chris, Gary, Bareline, and myself, Chris Pritchard, myself, and Gary Bareline have been just doing some research for the board on new building, new garage, town garage, looking at sites, just developing information for you. And what we have done so far is we reviewed three sites, the current site where the current garage is, the West Pollet property where the second garage is, and the gravel pit up here on Route 30. The group felt that the gravel pit makes the most sense for a couple of reasons. The size of the property is the right size. It's about 12 acres. And the location, it's between, if you want to call it the side of East Pollet, I'll call it, and West Pollet. So it's centrally located for both sides of town. So again, that's the property we suggest that the board look at to put a new town garage. The property might have to be subdivided at some point, which should not be a big issue. Because it's 12 acres, we might want to subdivide it into two parcels. The property should perk pretty well. It's all gravel, so we shouldn't have any problem with the septic system there. We inspected the Rupert Town Garage, which was built in 2013. It's a morte building, excellent building. We all, three of us thought it was a really well-done building. It's 60 by 120, 60 feet by 120 feet. It cost at that time in 2013 $500,000 to build. And then they, there was an extra $100,000 they spent on a shed, salt shed. But that's just to give you a ballpark of what we're talking about. I don't know how much more it would be now in 2024, but that's kind of the idea. Whether we would need to build a building 60 by 120, again, that's something that needs to be researched further, but just to give you an idea of the kind of building, the size of these buildings. One issue that probably is going to need, not probably, will need to be resolved if we, if the board decides to use that property, the gravel pit property, the driveway leading in there appears to be only 10 feet wide, which is not going to be wide enough for a driveway for that kind of building. So what probably will have to happen is that the town will probably have to purchase another strip of land right alongside that driveway from current property owners, probably, I'm guessing 14 feet. A 24-foot driveway should suffice. But again, that's something that can be looked at. That's the only sort of fly in the ointment is the width of that driveway. I say it's 10 feet, and I'm getting that number from a survey that was done by, by a surveyor for an adjoining property some years ago, and it shows it 10 feet wide. What probably one of the next steps would be to have the property surveyed anyway for the town, that the gravel pit survey. I could not find any surveys for that, if they exist. I don't know where they would be, but I looked in the town records, could not find it. So I think one of the next steps would be to hire a surveyor to survey the property so we know exactly where the property lines are, and confirm that that is indeed a 10-foot driveway. And then decide what we want to do to expand it. That's all I have. Any questions?
We appreciate your guys looking into this and taking the time to do the research and answer a lot of questions to get us a good jumpstart on this project. Does anybody have any questions for this group?
I guess I just have one question in regards to the road going up in there. That's owned by the town, it's not a right-of-way, correct?
That's correct.
So there'd be no restrictions if that's owned and not a right-of-way? If we were to build up in there, if we subdivided, then the town would govern over that as opposed to the state?
Yes, right.
So we wouldn't be restricted to a 50-foot right-of-way?
That's right. That's my understanding.
So if we had to run it down one-way road, we could, and that's not a deal, but if it's owned, there's no restrictions?
That's up to, that's up to the board. You know, we just assume that you'd want a two-way road truck going in and out, or a car going in and out.
Definitely. And I'm just thinking, you know, property owners on either side, I don't know how that would go.
Fran, two questions. Why is expanded right-of-way needed when it's potentially grandfathered for many years of using that road to access the property? And why would you need to subdivide it?
I can answer those questions. So we're a 10-acre town. So anything under 10 acres is governed by the, commercially is governed by the town and not the state at that point. So the town would govern what happens up there. And as far as the, what was your other question about the right-of-way? Yeah, so the reason that we would want it to be wider is so we could run, we could pass, two trucks could pass on a driveway, not just one 10-foot. You know, your truck with a wing and a plow is over 10-foot wide, there's crowd in that.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Thank you, gentlemen, for coming to the meeting tonight and sharing that information with us.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, and we'll keep in touch and keep moving forward with this project. Zoning Administrator?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to speak? Planning Commission?
We didn't have a meeting, but I do have an update about the Otter Creek Communication Union District, which I wanted to give, which is, kind of falls under Planning Commission. Even though we reappointed me as the person who was supposed, the representative to the Otter Creek Communication Union District, we need to sign the thing saying that I'm appointed. So I don't know if you could sign that, Mike? I don't think we needed a motion for it since we did that in our-
Well, we've already appointed you, right?
Yeah, since we did that in our other meeting. But we just need to send them the form. The other update is that at the last Otter Creek Communication Union District meeting, the representative from Consolidated was there by the name of, I got it, by the name of Scott, who is our liaison for the build-out that's going to be happening this year in the western half of our town. And he wants to, he would like to attend an upcoming select board meeting to just fill us in on the fiber build, like about when it's going to be starting. And he would really like to develop a point of contact in the town who anybody from Consolidated can go to. Basically, if while they're building, if somebody has a problem with one of the workmen, you know, or if they have an issue, they would love to be in contact if we had a road foreman, but we don't have a road foreman right now, just for the logistics. So I suggested that they, he come to one of our select board meetings, and then if it turns out that we have a road foreman by then, great. And if we don't, maybe he can get one of our road liaisons as his point person to talk to. But it does look like that build is going to be coming up pretty quick here, end of spring into, or into summer.
Of this year?
Yeah, of this year. So yeah, they're going to be out there laying fiber, and they're going to be, you know, yeah. So they need, they kind of need to liaise with the town about the logistics of it. So I don't know what meeting he wants to attend, if it's going to be in two weeks or if it's going to be four weeks, but yeah.
Okay. I guess if you could open that invitation to him, and pretty much we're all set, you could just arrange with Kristen.
Great. Yeah, I'll be in touch with him to set up a time.
Sounds good.
Excellent. That's really good news.
It is really nice to hear it's moving ahead as quickly as it is.
I guess so.
When I have the exact dates, I of course want to report them. But again, it's sometime this calendar year. They have a bunch of steps they have to go through with preparing the poles, and then they have to put in the fiber and all these other things, so.
All right. Excellent. Any questions for the Planning Commission? Road Foreman?
So Colby has been wonderful and very communicative in keeping us all updated on what's been going on with the Highway Department. And let's see, I've got a message from, he had several questions. But first started off with a list of what the Highway Department has been working on the last couple of weeks. They have been working on fixing dirt roads for safe passage. They've been completing truck maintenance and snow removal as needed, pre-treating roads and putting stone on dirt roads as needed. They've been hauling 3/8 inch stone to the Pollet Garage. They fixed a grizzly over in West Pollet. I don't know what that is. Is that a piece of equipment?
Yeah.
Grizzly?
Yes.
Okay. First, yeah, okay. Working on the chipper and installing new cutting blades. They have been working on tree removal alongside Haynes Tree Service, and he has been gathering quotes for plow blades. So there are a whole bunch of different quotes, which I'm not sure the appropriate way to go about getting into all of that. I just sort of was able to get into that myself this afternoon and start gathering things, so. Not sure if you want to talk about all that now, or if you want me to forward them along to your emails, or what? What the-
We have the printed list there, we could probably just go down that list and talk about them.
Under the Treasurer's memo, there's a list of things they want to get.
Oh, great.
It doesn't include the plow blades, though.
Okay. So also, before we get into the list, there was a question about whether or not we know when the Highway Department switches from the five-hour work, five-day work week to the four 10-hour days. The policy, the personnel policy says the 1st of April, which here we are, April 2nd. But I know that it's been, you know, every, with the weather. So that is something that will need to be communicated with Colby and Nate.
Julie, do you remember when, when the time, when they switched their times?
April 1st, but they usually waited until the start of the first, the pay period, so it wasn't always on the actual day.
Okay. When is the start of their next pay period?
Today?
Monday. This Monday was the, was the start. So if they don't want to, if they've already been on the opposite schedule, then it would just be two Mondays, like skip a Monday and the following Monday.
The 15th?
15th.
In other words, the 15th.
So does the board want to request that they make that switch on Monday, the 15th?
I guess that would probably be easiest for them, if right now they're on the assumption they're still on the five-day week.
Okay.
This week's looks like they're going to be busy anyways with nonsense, so.
Sleep, snow, who knows what.
Okay. I will let them know about that. Okay. I think-
Thank you, Julie.
It's everything, so if you want to look through that.
Majority of this has already been approved. Another chemical storage and the flammable cabinet, those are two things we had to get based off from the audit from-
Yeah. I thought-
And the eye wash as well.
Julie, do you remember the, the flammable cabinet and the dry erase board a while back? Did that?
The dry erase board, yes, but not, I didn't find anything for the flammable cabinet.
Okay. So we had, so those, I know that the board had both.
Yeah, we talked about those.
Those had been approved.
Bobby thinks that this is an invoice for the chemical storage cabinet and the eye wash station. Oh, that's a quotation.
It does say quote.
Just a quote.
Right, so we've got a quote for it to get it coming. So we've already okayed portions of it, which says, maybe we can get those coming.
Yeah.
Find a better deal.
So- So the roll-up work sign has already been purchased. So there's two things on here, the chemical storage cabinet from TIFCO and the flammable cabinet from Uline. So one, I thought the chemical storage cabinet was the one that had been requested.
I'm pretty sure in the audit, I don't have it here in front of me, but they required the chemical storage, the flammable cabinet, the gasoline, and the eye wash.
So I only remember, I only looked up one cabinet. So I don't know, I-
We could go back and-
I can go, I have all of the links and stuff in the emails, so I can go back and look. But I do know that the cabinets, at least one of the cabinets, the board had approved months ago.
Yeah.
So it must be back order?
Or it just never-
Never got ordered.
Never happened.
The order never got placed, possibly.
I think there's just been so much turnover in terms of like who does the communicating from the Highway Department, that I, I feel that with no, it's no fault of anybody's, it just things get sort of lost in the shuffle, so.
I have a copy of the audit too, if we go back through and see.
Yeah, I've got that.
Looks like someone else is on to them now.
That chipper's a Morbark, right?
I'm not sure what that is.
Because John Deere has full Morbark parts, so he could get them right from Nortrak's.
Okay.
John Deere and they're in a relationship with Morbark. So any Morbark parts you need, you can get.
Right through Deere?
Right through Deere, so, because we already have accounts with Nortrak, so, I mean, it doesn't really matter, but just-
We'll mention that.
Less, less accounts, it's just sometimes easier.
So how does everybody feel about the list of requests? It seems like really the eye wash, eye wash station and the new refrigerator are sort of the two outstanding items that haven't really been addressed.
Well, they need the eye wash station, that, we know that's required from the audit.
Right.
And it's, it's a safety thing.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And it's not at all expensive.
No. And the refrigerator, from the time that I've spent over at the town garage recently, I don't believe it works, the one that's currently there.
That, that would be very important to-
So.
To find a refrigerator somewhere.
Also, a newer refrigerator will use a lot less electricity, probably than some old one that doesn't work.
Good. The Amazon account, I don't, I don't know how much they'd really need. Can they just, do we have one at all, or is it just something that?
I think that, I mean, and Julie, I don't want to speak for you, I think that Julie manages the, places orders through Amazon. And I just know that with our purchasing policy, I think it's anything under 500 doesn't need approval, but I'm not sure how the board feels about that. I have been a part of some conversations with the Highway Department over the last year, where they have expressed the desire to have a little bit more autonomy with purchasing, just for smaller items, but, you know, I think just so that they don't feel like they need to come down here and-
Turn into such a big ordeal.
Yeah. But it's totally up to you all.
And there is some opportunity for huge savings as well. Amazon, there is some good deals.
Right. So we can, uh-
We already have an Amazon account, and it does come with a cost, so I don't think we need to have two.
Okay.
What do you mean?
So I'm just confused, Julie, because it said, oh, so this is their own personal Amazon account. So you already have one, then? They're just looking for their own personal one? Is that what, what I'm reading right here?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so we don't need two accounts.
So, so one, one should be adequate. It's not like you're buying stuff from them every day. They could shoot you a quick email with the, with the copy of what they need, right, Julie?
Right.
Okay. Bobby?
So-
It makes it cleaner, we don't need more accounts than we already have, so they could just send, you know, just send Julie what they, what they found.
Okay. What about the, what, how do you want to handle? I think that it should be communicated maybe in a form of a motion, that you do or do not support the purchase of these items, and then we can communicate that with the Highway Department, and then Julie can know that this is good or not.
Yeah, we need to have some way to relay the information back to them.
Yeah, which I can let Colby know, hey, the board is okay with all of these purchases and, you know, and Julie, if Julie's okay with it, that they can please work with Julie to complete them, or however everybody wants to handle it, but-
Right, so the town has it, has an Amazon account, so I think it makes sense that we just stick with one account, so it doesn't make it more confusing for Julie.
Right.
Borregard equipment, we can discuss whether or not we can get them from the, the Nortrak's dealer that we already do business with. The chemical storage cabinets and that, where there's still some question if they ever got ordered or approved, approved, the eye wash station should come. And new refrigerator for the garage, we kind of need to find some prices, I guess.
Okay.
And right now, they have just a small-
Little like mini fridge.
Like that one right there?
Smaller.
Oh, sure.
So am I sensing that we can say that we are going to discuss further the concept of the Borregard equipment? And all of the other things the board is okay with moving ahead with purchasing, and if they could please work on getting some pricing for the refrigerator? Is that the gist?
That sounds good.
Yeah, all these, like the chemical storage, the flammable cabinet, and the eye wash, I mean, all that stuff can get moved to the new garage. And it's, that's all a requirement anyhow, a BLCT, so that stuff we've got to have. And they were scheduled to come back and check on this as well.
So we should get the stuff front of.
Julie, are you okay with me letting-
He's looking, he's looking to meet with us again and see how we're doing on that, too. That's one of the other things we need to decide, if someone can make time to meet with him.
Yeah. Julie, are you okay with communicating with Colby on, yes, thumbs up, thank you. Okay, so I will let Colby know.
Thank. Julie and I were talking and one of the things she was wondering about with, with the credit card limit, if it could be increased, it would seem to be a restraining thing on some orders potentially where you, um, where maybe it should be looked into to increase the limit on the credit card.
The cap?
Yeah.
Since we have to buy so many things online, is that the thing? Yeah.
Just, you can't, everything has doubled in the last few years anyway, so. Yeah, well, that'll be another conversation we'll have.
Has that been an issue? Okay. Yeah, it's the first I've heard of it. Well, maybe we should ask her right now where she thinks the limit should go.
Yeah. Julie?
Yes?
Um, would you, uh, do you feel that we should raise our, our spending cap, approval spending cap?
If you mean like the, the dollar amount that doesn't require approval, no. But if, what you're asking is if we need to have a higher credit limit on our credit card, I have already submitted to do so because it was ridiculously low when they, when we got this new card. But we almost never used it in the past, so it never really was on my radar how low it was.
So you got it corrected?
I've already submitted everything that they have required of me to raise our limit. Our limit was $2,000.
Man, that is low.
Okay. So I guess you're on, on top of that, so thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Yes.
Anything else on the road crew?
It's all just the plow blades, um, which I think what I will do is Julie submitted, where we're at currently with the highway budget. And I think that what probably makes the most sense in the interest of time and attention at the meeting would be to have the li, the highway liaisons look at where we're at with the budget and look at all the prices for the plow blades and make a plan for, to present at the next meeting.
And these would be just getting the blades now for, for next season, right?
Yeah, and I'm assuming the greater blades are on there as well, I don't know. I haven't seen the email.
So it's not a big rush, we can, we can hear about it next meeting and make a decision.
I do want to bring up, um, one other thing, too, that MAC that we sent out uh, over to Get Ahead Injectors is ready to pick up. Well, as of noon, it was going to be ready. Uh, there's, I think they put 10 gallons of fuel in it, so whoever goes over to get the truck is going to either have to take a card with them or a pickup with, with a tank of fuel in the back to put in the, or some cash.
Yeah.
Because it's not going to make it back on 10 gallons of fuel. So that is ready. Uh, they had one other code that came up in that truck, um, that they had to take care of. Other than that, they said it was, there's one fuel line that's on national back order. And it's leaking just, just a little bit. So they're going to get that in and send it to us whenever it comes in. But I think it's been on back order for like two years, so I don't know, know what these guys are doing to replace it. But I haven't seen the hose.
And the other thing about that was, so I had received an email today, which it went to Julie as well, which was the final price, and I forwarded it to all of you. My understanding is that they're want, they are, they are going to want payment when the truck is picked up, which is likely going to happen between this meeting and the next meeting. So I'm not sure logistically how that works. They had expressed that, and I said that it would, you know, I relayed the message that there's a meeting tonight and that the board approves purchases tonight, and that the next round of approval doesn't happen until the next meeting, so I had tried to get it to all of you before the meeting, or I did get it to all of you before the meeting tonight, I know it was last minute, but, um, I wasn't sure if you all wanted to take a second to look at that, because either you're, you'll have to approve it. I'm assuming you might have to approve it tonight so that it can be authorized, or you'll have to wait until the next meeting, and then the truck can't be picked up for.
Two weeks.
Another two weeks.
And we don't want that. We, we're going to need the truck. Do you know if the insurance payment had come in? That was a question.
It says on the treasurer's memo that it has.
Yes.
Yeah, so I think we should approve the payment.
So the invoice, so Julie, I had, you, I think you got the emails probably at some point this afternoon. I think you were on it, too. I do believe that, because I quickly looked at it, and it looks to me like the payment, the final invoice that they sent is less than the payment that we received from insurance by, seemed like it was almost like $10,000. I'm not sure what happened there, or maybe insurance just determined.
Is, is, sorry to interrupt, is this the one from, that came in this afternoon? State Line, yeah, that's, that's not under, it's over.
It's over, right? It's more than what the insurance payment was?
$10,000 more.
Right, yeah, okay, that's what I was just.
So they must have made some changes, they must have made some repairs of that truck after the, uh, the adjuster came and looked at it.
So, yeah, I'm not sure if that's something that.
Right.
We, I'm, I'm just not sure, because I know, my understanding was that, because I had talked with State Line a little bit, and I, just trying to coordinate with the insurance, with VLCT with insurance, because I, when I filed that, and they had said that after we did the initial file, that VLCT would be in touch with State Line, and that they had come to an agreement with the repairs and everything like that, so I'm just not, that's just something I wanted to make sure everybody was also paying attention to.
We'll have to get a copy of the invoice, and then we'll call the insurance company.
Okay, we have a copy of the invoice, so.
You got that today?
Mm-hmm. Yes. But we still have to approve to pay the invoice so that we can do that and pick up the truck?
Yes.
Yep.
You can conditionally approve this place and do this insurance thing tomorrow, to make sure that everything, because usually when an adjuster settles with it, it's settled. So that's maybe a communication problem or something in the invoicing.
Yes, okay.
We don't, we don't know.
Julie?
I'm certain we don't have a $10,000 deductible, I'm not sure what it is, but.
The, the invoice or the work, it's the repair order that they attached with the pricing on it, and then they said in the body of the email, here are extra items on the trucks that we did. Fuel filters and sealing rings were for diagnostic purposes before the quote was done. Fuel tank welding, welding, and other parts related to installing the tank. Fuel filter base cover that could not be reused from the old filter base. Shoulder screws were preventing the EGR valve. Diffuser displaced because the bolts that hold the seventh injector broke off on removal. This was removed to clean as part of the DPF cleaning. DEF and hose were needed to repair existing faults for the DEF system. The line heaters were bad, and this is not relatable to the contamination problem. One was replaced, but the other is not available, so the MIO light won't be on. We're trying to get the other hose if possible.
Okay, that makes sense, then. Those are items unrelated to the accident.
Yeah. So. Do we, how do we go about running, that invoice didn't make the warrants, right, Julie?
I would approve the, a more, the warrant as presented with the amendment of the State Line bill for the amount that it is, which, uh, where did it go? $44,764.27. And I will just present an updated warrant to you at your next meeting, but it won't need to be approved because you're already approving it tonight.
Thank you. So is there anything more to do on the road foreman's report? Okay, so we're pretty good with that. We just got to add that to Julie's, and assessors, anything from the assessors today? Town clerk's memo.
Um, other than what's on my memo, I don't really have anything to add. Bob's already been signing the fleet permits, and I did email the, the Pollet roads with regard to the problem that's forming on North Pollet Road.
Okay. So. Figure out what's going on with that, and.
Mm-hmm.
You got all the certificates done, Bob?
I did send a picture, yeah, I, I sent a picture on, it's on Kristen's table.
Okay.
I'll go take a look at that, um, with Colby and determine what we need to do. And that could, could be causing a lot of trouble under that road, it's hard to tell with a picture. But that's not a good sign.
Yeah, the citizen that reported it, he said that it seemed to be over and over, and that it's, um, getting more and more compromised the march travel. So, um, I had sent, uh, gave a card, because she wasn't sure if it was on the well side or the Pollet side, so gave a card, took it right over, and took, sent me the picture and determined that it was on Pollet side of North Pollet Road.
Okay, so we'll deal with that. I guess anybody have any questions for Deb? Okay, thank you for joining us tonight, Deb.
Good, thank you.
There's yours memo. Do you want to read it yourself, Julie, or do you want us to read it?
Want me to?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Julie, I got you, there are two warrants this week. Payroll is $12,048.01. Accounts payable is $23,666.51. General fund money is $11,355.49. Highway fund, $20,488.40. Waste water fund, $3,870.63. The VLCT insurance payment has come through for the 18 MAC. Uh, we've discussed that, and, um, that's submitted by Julie. Also, we have already discussed what Julie included were the quotes and the list of requests from the highway department. So the motions that are necessary tonight are for payroll warrant 24051 for $12,048.01, and accounts payable warrant 24049 for $23,666.51, and to approve the payment for the repair of the 2018 MAC for the amount of $44,764.27.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear anything for a while, and then you were creating my report.
Oh.
Um, I'll move that we approve those two warrants, um, 24051 and 24049 with the amendment of the State Line invoice for 44,764.27.
Have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. Anybody have any other questions for Julie?
I just have a quick question. I just want to confirm so we can tell the highway department, when they go over to pick up, and this might be a question for you, Julie, when they go to pick up the truck and they need to fuel it, what's the best way to make sure that they have funds to put fuel into the truck when they're over in New Hampshire?
Do we have a?
Probably take the credit card out, I think.
Okay. So I'll just let them know that when they figure out a date, we can just connect with you and make sure they grab, grab a credit card.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank.
You can also buy a cash card, it would cover that purchase.
Okay. That's an option.
So there is one other thing that Julie had put on the table, so it was, a while back, we had gotten that letter about the Vermont Elevator Inspection Services. So. A cost, there was something about cost savings if we had done a specific kind of contract. And so there would only be a cost, Julie had said that cost savings would only come with a three, four, or five year contract, um, if we were to work with them. We had gotten a letter talking about a discounted agreement, but I'm not sure if we want to, if you want to go that route.
And how much was the, the total cost savings?
Oh, well. Uh. It's a great question. Do you know more about this, Julie, the elevators?
I'm very much struggling to hear, but, so I put that out because we, I know I put it out a while ago, and then you left the little note that you left on top of it, asking me to look into it. And I found it in my drawer, and I was like, geez, I don't remember if I actually ever put this back out for them, or if it was just stuck in my drawer and misplaced.
I think I'm just seeing it now for the first time.
Not for the first?
Well, for the second time.
Right, okay, so I did in fact forget to put it out for you. So there's the answer to the question asked of me quite some time ago.
Okay. So do you feel that it's worth it? It's worth it for this?
Um, I guess that it would just be, I'm guessing on whether we think that they're going to increase their prices in the near future.
Okay.
Which they probably are.
And this is the new elevator people who we prefer, right? Yeah. Not the people that had the tricky contracts and, for years and years. Thanks. Yeah, that's something else. That's about right.
Well, there's the discounts. If we do three years, it's 5% off. If we do four years, it's 10% off. And if we do five years, it's 15% off, the total.
Which would be. High ground elevators rated in two stops, huh? High ground elevators with three, two or three stops, we are a three stopper, right?
So it's 200 bucks.
And may I, well, go for five years?
Yeah, I mean, it's such a reasonable rate anyway. I don't see any reason why we'd change.
Anybody have any, any more questions? We could do five years, get 15% off, and it's only 200 bucks a year to get it. What is it, inspection? That's just strictly an inspection, it's not. Re-inspect the fees, it's not a routine maintenance, but. Somebody want to make that motion, we do a five year?
Sure, I'll move that we do a five year contract with, what's their name? The Vermont Elevator Inspection Services.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post, carried. Carried.
Julie, did you get that, can I just leave that on your desk?
What, what's the question?
Can I leave that inspection, um, paper on your desk?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was some other random thing that was stuck to it.
Anything else for the town treasurer?
Where'd that?
Emergency management, do you got anything for Bob and I?
Yes, I did. Um, so in March twenty-twenty-four, um, the local emergency management plan was updated and needed signatures, which it did. And Bob attended the Rutland Regional Emergency Management Committee meeting. That's it. And there's nothing to report from Jennifer for the health officer at this meeting.
Waste water, I haven't heard any, any changes there, any issues. Facilities, anything about this facility?
The only thing that I had was that, so, um, Peter, who had requested to use the auditorium and there was that overlap with the Historical Society, so I let him know and he wasn't quite sure if that would work for him, so he was going to get back to me and I haven't heard anything from him yet. So, um, at this point in time, it's looking like just the Historical Society is going to be using that space and, um, we're still waiting an update from Peter on when he would like to move in there and use it.
Harley, anything with fires facilities, you're out, I'll stop for now.
Nothing's leaking right now.
Uh, Metairie School Board? Nothing from the school board? Old, old business, rail trail had a lease agreement.
Right, so I sent the, I sent the sample lease agreement that V-Trans did with Poltony around to all of you and I hope you've got a chance to look at it and see if we would like to sign something similar with V-Trans.
I did review it and it looks kind of complicated to me. It just looked like an awful lot of pages and, and a whole bunch of, well, that's really your problem. And my, my opinion is that since we have the Dutchy store property right there, that we could probably use that to put some, some type of...
On that little corner?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it was just right across from the trailhead, so...
Yeah.
And that way we wouldn't, we wouldn't be intermingled with, with the state saying, well, you know, this, this really isn't up to you or, it just looked to me like a lot of ways that they could wiggle around and it could be our problem and... And they also, they also have numbers for lease agreements, it was going to charge us so much, they charged Poltony so much.
No, the, the, those parts were all crossed out with the numbers. Yeah, I don't know why they didn't just delete them instead of cross out the parts with the numbers, but, no, um, we wouldn't be charged anything, but the parts of the lease agreement that, that are, the, the legalese are probably just, I mean, well, legalese of a lease.
It sounds...
I suppose we could have our lawyer look at it if we wanted to, but if, if it's the sense of the board, I mean, because I really, uh, I'm strongly in favor of us putting up something with the money that we have from that grant. But if the preferred spot is on that little corner where the town owns the property, we could put things there and I, I really have no opinion about one way or the other. As long as we put up some amenities, you know, like I said, the little bike station, a little bench, you know, and an improved kiosk. I did have a meeting, um, I had a meeting about a week ago with, um, people from Rutland Regional Planning Commission and with the, the person, Jim Henderson, who is with the Bennington Planning Commission, who's working on the Rupert end of things. And it does look like there is enough extra money in that grant for them to put up some similar benches and kiosks, um, at the Rupert Trailhead as well. And, um, Devin from Rutland Regional Planning Commission ran some numbers for us. And it, yeah, it looks like we have enough to do like a couple nice benches, an improved kiosk, and one of those little bicycle repair stations that I know you were singing the praises of last time, Kristen. So, yeah, so he ran those numbers for us.
And, and we're, and you would do it on, let's say, the north side of the, the road there where the old train station was? Or closer to the bridge, on the side closer to the bridge?
Um, I don't, we haven't determined a spot yet. We've just loo- looked at the numbers of what we could put up. But the thought that I'd been think, I mean, the place I've been thinking personally would be most convenient, if we did it on town land, it would be, um, fairly near the intersection. So where we've got the old Dutchies and then the, then we've got that privately owned building and then our property loops around.
Loops around.
And where it loops back around, right, was what the spot I was kind of thinking of. Because right now, there's really nothing there. It's just kind of a empty lot.
Where the old parking lot used to be.
Frank?
Isn't it right above the rural road owned parking lot? There's a little rise there and there's a piece of land there. They were going to move the memorial, or more memorials to that at one point in time as a plan. I thought that was town property right there too.
Now it's part of the D and H.
No, the, the one thing that we did talk about at the V-Trans meeting was that wherever we, so in the West Pollet master plan, there was a concept for how to adjust that intersection. And that, um, and so we probably shouldn't put anything up in a spot where if we go with that plan to adjust the intersection, we'd then have to move the stuff. But, um, also, um, in good news, which is totally unrelated, but when I was talking to Devin, he said that he could get somebody from Rutland Regional Planning Commission on the task of talking to V-Trans about that intersection. Like to present them the idea from the master plan and see what they would need from us regarding, basically to look, start looking.
What they would give us for input to how to approve.
Exactly, yeah.
That would be very valuable.
Yeah, because I know, I know last fall, I had said I would talk to somebody from V-Trans and that just didn't happen. So if they can do it, it would be great.
Harley?
Uh, when the benches are cited, shade would be a consideration.
Okay, that is, that is something to think about. And, because there's no trees, right, on that particular spot.
Not in that little corner.
But like, you know, an, an awning or umbrellas or something like that would be an option.
Frank?
So the amount we're talking about is a very small amount with Rupert and, and West Pollet. And that would come out of the existing signage, et cetera, part of that grant without an amendment needed. So it doesn't...
No, a grant amendment will be needed.
For that?
It would come out of the part that was for the feasibility study, which we did not spend all of. Partly because the firm we contracted with came in significantly under the amount that we were, that given in the grant. And partly because we then didn't end up going through with making architectural plans. I do want to get with you, Frank, I'll probably send you an email, because the, there's, there's a bit of this that I'd like your help with.
So, do you guys want to take some more time and look the lease agreement over? Or do you think that we would be just as far ahead to put it on that, that little corner piece of property? That's, it borders Egg Street there and, because the town property actually wraps around Ray's building and comes back to that intersection. We could, we could put it right there, directly across that road, it would be on our property and we wouldn't have to worry about any...
Yeah, I think that makes the most sense.
I, I just kind of like the idea a little bit better.
Well, and if we do that, we can actually move ahead a little faster. Because the place in Rupert where they want to put it is also, it's like on their town green, so it's also on town property and not on the, so then we don't have to even spend any time signing a lease agreement. We can just get right on talking to the grant people. We might save some time.
Funds are still available for that.
That makes a little bit more sense.
Okay, I'll make a note of that then, if that's the sense of the board. Thank you.
Is there any other old or unfinished business? New business? Awesome. Public comment?
I did go up into the attics of both this building, that, it's like a massive, it was sadist up there as you saw it, and I took some really great lighting up there and took pictures of heat loss. And it's a consistent amount of heat loss, that is not like one place that's glowing except around the chimneys. So there's some really unbelievable, really dense insulation in the, in the attics of both places. But there's been a lot of mice. So that's, that's part of this MERC program, where, which I've sent pictures of that to Rutland Regional and for the MERC program people.
Have you done other buildings in town?
No, there's a technical issue on taking pictures of, of personal property.
I didn't know if you did it with, with the owner's consent or anything like that.
I did my place. Fine, I got consent, but I'm not going to go out taking pictures of, of people's houses, given its privacy, private information and condition of their insulation, may affect your values of their houses. They can perfectly well do this if they want and check the cameras out when they're over at the library. But, um, I'm not going to tread...
Has anybody, has anybody checked the cameras out to use them themselves yet?
Well, you've checked it, you, you tried it out and Julie apparently may have tried it out, right? And, uh...
Yeah, we haven't really done our kickoff yet, we're hoping to do an event. And I was able to get in touch with the efficiency Vermont people who would be interested in coming out for the event to talk about their, about their, um, resources that they have for people to insulate their houses. So we just have to figure out a time for the event and then we can do a kickoff and then people will know about it and be able to check them out.
And we're going to have the display and pictures and cameras and stuff up at the climate concert at the church.
That, which is in May.
Which is in May.
So that will also promote it, I think.
Yeah, so we're going to dovetail all this.
Don't you think the sooner you get going on it, the better? Because if it's warm out, your...
My sentiments exactly.
Your cameras won't work very well if it's the same temperature outside as it is inside.
My sentiments exactly. But I've been trying to move as fast as I can, but this circumstance is beyond my control.
Because if you don't get it going until warm weather, maybe you'll see a heat change between air conditioning inside and hot weather outside, but the people wouldn't be able to take measures to prevent heat loss till the next winter and so they wouldn't be able to do any preventative stuff until next fall.
One of, one of our ceilings was the, uh, we could put the cameras, at least one camera over there probably with the materials. That would be a good idea and else that, um, that's, yeah, I, I think we can talk about that.
Yeah, we can, we can figure out a date. I agree sooner than later.
Thanks, Bob.
Any other public comment?
Hi, Hillary Sullivan, Poltony Metairie Conservation District, I just had two quick announcements at this time. Um, so first, I want to let you know there's been a little bit of a break in the flood resilience work we were doing in the Flowerbrook Watershed over here, um, but we're going to be back in town this summer doing some work. Um, we, we sent out notices, letters to the landowners in December and we'll put a notification in the P newsletter and maybe send out some more postcards because we're going to be walking up the streams at the top of the Beaverbrook Watershed, Flowerbrook Watershed, so we want to make sure we don't surprise anyone on their property. And then also, just that there's quite a bit of funding right now to do phosphorus reduction, water quality projects. I'm working on that with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. We've started to realize that we can partner on projects, so if you have projects like a Colvert replacement or something where you're looking for some funding, but you already have some funding, we basically pay for the phosphorus reduction and it's very easy to get the funds and we help write the applications and help with all the paperwork. Um, so if there are any water quality type projects, um, that you have had your eyes on and you need a little bit of funding, feel free to reach out and we can talk through that, those possibilities. I know at one point we talked about like a scoping study in West Pollet, that type of thing would be really easy to fund right now. Um, and that was it, I'm hoping to visit with the planning commission and go over some of this in more detail, but I wanted to just make sure that you knew and that I caught up with the select board too.
Thank you for stopping in. Anybody have any questions?
Message me about the planning commission.
Okay, that sounds good.
Sue?
Hi. Um, I just learned recently that rather than go to mediation or negotiation with Lindsay, the library board's deciding to go to court and, um, fight to keep her from getting her job back, basically. Um, they have an attorney at no cost to them, so they've got no skin in the game. They can keep their heels dug in and continue to run the library with the lack of professionalism and no direction. The public still doesn't know if Harley Cudney will dump his thirty-two-hundred-dollar legal bill on the VLCT of library donors who donated the money for books and programs, not his mistakes. He continues to bully the library board members, pushing them to start the hiring process for a new director when nothing's been settled regarding the fiery of Lindsay Barnes and her being fired with no notice and no given reason and by email. It's not the time to hire a new director or interim director who may lose her job when Lindsay's rehired. Harley has eleven more months in his term. Unless he resigns sooner, it'll be eleven months of poor management, bullying, and embarrassment to the library and to the town. This is something that will affect the whole town. It's time for Harley to resign and Lindsay to be reinstated. Just wanted to say that.
Harley?
Clarification, the library board is not intending on going to court.
Is this up, I'm sorry, Mike, can I ask you something? His, this is what his attorney is telling the other attorneys that they've decided to do that. So maybe something has changed in the past couple days.
Any other public comment?
I make a motion that we go into the executive session to discuss the ongoing attorney client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body and also to discuss labor relations agreements with employees.
One second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
No.
Carried.